Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. I'm councillor Coringalstorfer and I'd like to welcome the public, my fellow council members, the media, and anyone who's joining us in person and electronically for this committee of the whole meeting. Today's agenda lists all the items before committee for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. It's important to note that any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of January thirteenth, twenty twenty six, at which time council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being livestreamed and any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from the meeting will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right-hand corner of the county's homepage, thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item Five, I will be asking for comments from the audience on any item listed on the agenda. Today we have one registered comment from the audience, but if anyone present would like to speak at this section of the agenda, you're welcome to do so. You will have three minutes. A reminder that if you participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and form part of the public record and be posted to the county's website. In the event of a fire, please use the applicable two fire exits in Shire Hall or wherever you're tuning in from. For those in Shire Hall, council chambers, please mute and limit the use of cellphones. Now, may I please get a motion to confirm today's agenda? Councillor St Jean and councillor Brandhorst.
Thank you, Mr Chair. St Jean Brandhorst, motion that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of December eleventh, twenty twenty five be confirmed.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. That'll bring us to Section Three, Disclosure of Pecuniary Interests and the general nature thereof. Does anybody have anything to disclose today? Seeing none. So that will move us to deputations, and today we have one. We have Brian Hart and Daniel Livasin, maybe, Levarson, to address the committee regarding the Home and Farm Initiative and the proposed organics processing site. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, you have ten minutes.
Okay. Thank you kindly, council, for the opportunity to come and address you today about a very important part of Kate's Rest Foundation called the Home and Farm Initiative. I want to acknowledge my presence today with Daniel Levarchin of Biossustainer in Ottawa, and also Amande Aljasim, who is a community service worker in training at Kate's Rest, and also Tim McGrath, who is our residents' association representative here today. So, how do I start this? Right here? So we're speaking of creating farming communities in Prince Edward County in particular. The Royal Bank of Canada and many others have been citing the fact that there are a lot of farming, farmers who are going to be retiring in the next couple of years or dozen years, and somewhere in the neighbourhood of thirty thousand. And so we're looking to promote farming through our initiative called the Home and Farm Initiative. And many of the farms that are going to be sold, and a lot of them are going to be used for housing developments, a lot of them are going to be used for, sold to great, large agricultural corporations. And what we want to do is maintain and preserve the small family farm unit. So that's kind of what we have in mind with the Home and Farm Initiative, but targeting vulnerable people, people who need to be included in our economy. So Kate's, just a little bit about Kate's Rest. We've been around almost twenty years. Next year will be our twentieth anniversary, and we've been providing, we're a charity, of course, and we've been providing permanent supportive housing for many people, men, women, and children. And these are folks who have been coming from the streets primarily, or referred to us through different agencies. And our focus is not just on housing, because we have come to understand that housing alone is not the solution to homelessness, but community. And not just any kind of community, but community, what we call companionships of empowerment. And so we think that that's a vital aspect of how we solve the problem or contribute to the solution of homelessness. So today's request, right up front, is we're looking to have a public-private civil society partnership. That's what we want to work towards, and we're asking that council might direct the appropriate municipal staff to work with Kate's Rest's team to explore this public-private civil society partnership proposal in earnest and to return to council by March of next year at the latest with recommendations as to whether to proceed or not, and if so, then what are the next steps in implementing this proposal? Now, what is this partnership about? It's about a facility that would be located at Demarestville, not in the village, but at Demarestville, on the municipal site there, and it would be equipped to process sustainably the county's organic household waste into organic liquid fertiliser. We spoke of that back in June when we were here before you. To also have a house, a modular house manufacturing facility there, and also to assemble hydroponic farm systems. All of these are, would be the economic engine behind the Home and Farm Initiative. Those are the components, the essential components to what we're trying to create. The Home and Farm Initiative is a social enterprise that would include people at Kate's Rest in a four-year program. They're invited to participate to develop social and business skills for economic community integration. They become certified at the end of that four years as owners and operators of a hydroponic farm business within a supportive farming community. And as a result of that activity, they should have sufficient income to own their own modular home within a thriving farm community. That's the goal. And our housing will be state-of-the-art modular housing, and it would include assistive devices for people with disabilities of different forms, either mobile, mobility restrictions, but also mental health challenges. The county was, wrote, was very generous in writing a letter of support for our initiative back in twenty twenty-three, and we're very much in favour of, are glad to have that support, and we look to working with you going forward in this project. Now, Kate's Rest has been a silent partner for a number of years now, since its beginning, and someone who has taken note of our contribution in a silent way within the county has been someone by the name of Greg Sabera, who was the former Ontario Finance Minister. And Greg looked over our books, and he came up with this memorandum which spoke to our efficacy in caring for people who are homeless. He wrote, "Most analysts estimate that homelessness annually costs municipalities anywhere between thirty thousand to a hundred thousand per person, depending on the region. The work of Kate's Rest should be seen within this context. Over the years, with twenty people housed each year, the cost savings to the municipality are enormous." And it's not changing. There we go. "Having reviewed the foundation's financial documents, what I find particularly noteworthy is that it has a remarkable, successful track record at a tiny fraction of what is being spent by governments to address the homelessness crisis." So what I'm saying there is that we're a silent partner, but we're very efficient in what we do. So Kate's Rest has a development team that's been working on the type of housing and hydroponic farm development that I'm speaking of. Volt Server Inc., which specialises in digital electricity for houses and hydroponic farms. They are currently active in installing the same digital electricity in our cottages at Kate's Rest on Big Island. ModuleLogic is the modular house manufacturer, headed up by Anthony Francis, who is a resident here in the county for many years and works here. Biossustainer, led by Daniel Levarchin, and they are the specialists in organic liquid fertiliser and hydroponic assembly. And of course, Loyalist will be helping us with our certification of our hydroponic farm owners and operators. Speaking about ModuleLogic, Anthony wanted to be here, but he's in India at the moment, so he, on a personal family matter. So I'll, he, his goal is to create modular houses manufactured using robotic technology to maximise output and minimise waste, and replacing all of Kate's Rest's current housing stock and with a proposed hydroponic farmhouse in the future at a new location, which will include new smart housing that he's working on. And the integrated systems to support residents struggling with mental health or mobility challenges, and it will be, recycled materials will be used wherever possible in order to make the housing sustainable. Biossustainer, Daniel can answer questions when I'm finished with regards to that process, but Biossustainer is based in Ontario, in Ottawa exactly, and is working with Kate's Rest to provide solutions to organic waste management. The biofertiliser, which is created through a closed-loop transformative processing of organic waste, organic household waste. It operates with a zero-waste and emissions cycle, with gases filtered or combusted for combined heat and cooling, and all water recycled is recycled in the process. So there's nothing going out of the process into the environment. The facility will receive all of the county's household waste, if we come to an agreement, and farm organic waste. Hundreds of thousands of dollars can be saved to, by the county in this arrangement. And organic liquid fertiliser would be donated for application to all municipally-owned land and also available to county farm owners at cost of production. So the organic waste facility would use only organic waste from the county. We're not going to be bringing it in from anywhere. Just what we have here is enough. Approximately twelve trucks daily will be accessing the facility for waste inputs and liquid fertiliser outputs. So that's the maximum number of trucks. I'm not sure what size trucks, but I don't think they'll be that large. Water output or input will be manageable according to the available data that we've looked at, and we will be using a concentrated fertiliser output to minimise that water usage. And the facility is designed for the smallest environmental footprint, and we'll be using renewable energy technology for our processes. So the report that we hope the council will approve for us to develop with the staff will answer questions of zoning, water use, assignment of land, how that gets assigned for our use, and the project timeline, the roles and responsibilities within the partnership, and the community consultations which will be necessary. So once again, my last slide is missing. What we're asking is that council might direct the staff, appropriate staff, to work with Kate's Rest team to explore this public-private civil society partnership proposal in earnest and to return to council by March at the latest of twenty twenty-six with recommendations as to whether to proceed or not, and if so, then what are the next steps implementing this proposal? So a request for a study. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to see if there's any questions from committee members. Councillor Grosso.
Thank you so much for that deputation. Does Kate's Rest have its own charitable number, or is it through the county foundation?
We have our own registered charity number.
Oh, you do? Well, that's great. Thank you. Councillor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just a question. You provided a lot of information. I guess, how far in the process are you at getting that, bringing something forward? It's good to have all the information, but, you know, sometimes the plans could take two or three years for that to materialise. And the other part is, you mentioned the water aspect of it, but how much water would you be using? Because if it's enough, you got to go through the Ministry of Environment, which will take some time too, so I'm just.
We would, we would be very pleased to be able to do this tomorrow, of course, but it's going to take time for these reports to be prepared. That's why we're targeting March, but if we can get it done sooner, these are the report. But we have a lot of significant companies wanting to come forward and put an investment into this process. We have a company from Turkey that's going to donate to the process six million dollars in equipment. I was speaking yesterday with companies in South Korea that want to be involved in terms of agricultural technologies that they want to include, as well as hydroponics. Pretty well everybody that I speak to want to be involved tomorrow as much as quickly as possible, but that will take time to pull it all together, and we want to make sure that we cross every T and dot every I in terms of the municipality.
And then the water use?
Water usage, we're, again, we want to minimise the water usage because of, we, obviously the county has a water issue. We've looked at the data that's available for that area. We believe that we can do this without having to jeopardise any water sources that are available in that area, but we will have to get permits to be able to take that water.
I'll go councillor Brandhorst and then councillor Roberts.
Great. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's, it's quite neat. One of my first questions is just based on, is a by-product of energy, or is the main product of energy created through the biosystem?
Energy? Where the, the, the process is to create organic liquid fertiliser. That's the main product.
As the main product, but I, just as, so similar to most biodigester systems, like they create an off-product, which is the fertiliser, but then in the system of removing methane from it.
Yes.
It creates a by-product or main product, because it's more profitable most times than the by-product of the organic substance of energy.
I think that the only gases that will, there won't be that much in terms of the process, and I'm not sure my friend here will be able to answer that question more directly, but what I understood is that the gases that are coming from that will be used to create combined heat and power for the facility so that we're not, so that we're sustainable.
Okay, so it's more, so it's less producing than traditional biodigester systems because it's.
My understanding, yes.
More putting that back into the output product of liquid fertiliser.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Roberts.
Hi, Brian. Sorry I was late.
Sorry.
And welcome to council chambers. Good to see you. I'd just like to acknowledge that, speaking for Saphiasburg, you brought vision and your own unique brand of social enterprise for supporting the marginalised and the homeless, and you deserve a big thanks for that. And it remains a puzzle for me why you have faced so much opposition and challenges and barriers, some of them overt, of course, and some of them covert, and in my view, very disappointing. And I thank you for your persistence, your courage, your vision, your drive. It's a, it's a, it's a blessing, so thank you for that. Again, just for Saphiasburg, I'm impressed by the folks that I encounter through the Women's Institute, through the County Food Hub, through the church, a friendship church that speaks so highly of Kate's Rest and support Kate's Rest. Quite a few hot meals end up at Kate's Rest as well. So I'm very much in support of, of this motion that's coming up under Item 6.1, because I think, I think, I think the county as a whole should benefit from that vision and that compassion and that drive and that inventiveness that you and your colleagues bring to Kate's Rest. So you have my support, and overall, you have my thanks and gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Councillor Harrison.
Yes, I have just a couple of definitions here that I'd like to hear whether, you mentioned a hydroponic farmhouse. What's a hydroponic farmhouse?
Well, a farmhouse, I don't think anyone needs, it's a, is a home on a farm, and the farming which we wanted to create is hydroponics. Whether it's attached to the house as an extension to the house, or whether it's separate, as we can design it whichever way is the most applicable for that piece of land. But basically, we would have small farms, and each resident would have that operation, which would be sufficient in terms of its outputs to support them in that home, and they wouldn't be needing social assistance then.
Follow-up on that first one a bit. To support them for their own use or support them financially?
To support them financially.
Okay. And the next question, and this is kind of back to the water thing. You were saying about the water saving with the concentrated output. Does that mean, say, a farmer bought some of that, that he adds his own water, or what, what's the story for spraying?
I believe that is the case. It would either be that the, whoever purchases the concentrate would be adding water to it, to, to whatever the standards are. It could be a farmer himself or herself, or it could be a businessman that's selling, you know, retailing the product.
Okay, I, I think this is something that this presentation should go to the Agriculture Advisory Committee.
The, the Agriculture Advisory Committee advised council to support it and, and the, the concept.
Okay, I guess I missed that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Technical question perhaps for, for Daniel. What sort of tonnage of material would be required to make the, the fertiliser plant effective?
Thank you for the question. So we have a research team in Ukraine, and they developed a process, and they, in our process, we use organic waste and chicken tenure as the primary ingredients, and it creates an organically good fertiliser with zero waste. And this technology has been used in Turkey for a couple of years right now. Biossustainer is independent from the company, but the founder is the same. I'm the partner in Canada, and the founder in Turkey is planning to move to Canada, and he's planning to, he has two factories in Turkey. He's planning to remove one of them to Canada, and I don't have access to all research details, but I know that it's, it has zero harm to environment, and it's a new innovative approach in, in producing organically good fertiliser from, from organic waste. But the, one of the primary ingredients is chicken tenure and chicken manure, and we have done some research, and we have that capacity in Ontario in this region as well.
Yep. Just by way of follow-up, I was trying to get at how much material is needed to make the plant effective. I've, I've seen, I mean, according to Mr Pashkovia, who's report we'll be looking at soon, best-case scenario is about eighteen hundred tonnes annually here, whereas similar plants that I've seen in western Canada operate on, on like a hundred thousand tonnes annually. So does this kind of scale work with this operation?
Yes, the, the, the whole system is scalable, so initially we are planning to limit ourselves with the county's needs, which will be approximately twenty tonnes of organic waste processing, and it will give us approximately one hundred eighty tonnes of organically good fertiliser if the company operates with full capacity, and, but this is if we just, if we don't use the concentration. So one hundred eighty tonnes liquid fertiliser per day if the capacity is fully operationalised. But this can be scaled up or scaled down, and we are planning to build similar capacities in different regions as well. So we will, we will be mindful about the water limitations of the country and traffic limitations, and, and we are even considering to produce the concentrate here and add water somewhere else where we will have less, less risks. So we are quite flexible in terms of the process, also in terms of the scale of the production. But currently, our, our plans are based on the actual organic waste production of the county, which is approximately twenty tonnes per day, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back to councillor Harrison.
Yes, just a quick question. What's the analysis of the finished product?
Wait, what is it?
The analysis, the fertiliser analysis of the finished product.
Yeah, it's, it's organically good fertiliser, and it has been used in hydroponic farming specifically, and I can provide the research details, but it's forty-three percent more efficient than traditional fertiliser, and it.
No, but my question is the analysis nitrogen potash phosphorus.
I don't.
Which is the standard that most farmers here look at.
I, I can provide that information, but I don't have, I'm not the, I'm not part of the research. I'm more part of the social enterprise model and the business analysis part, and, and as the Canadian component of the big structure, we don't have full access to the details of the process. So it's, the process is owned by the company in Turkey, but I can provide some, some analysis that, and this is the intention, I can provide that information.
Because that's the critical part of this.
Yes, absolutely, yes. In terms of compliance and efficiency, yes, we will provide that.
Well, as a farmer, you know what your uptake is, et cetera. If you're going to use this product, you need to know what you're getting.
Oh, yes.
And that analysis.
Yes.
Or that's what makes it either viable or not viable, to, as far as purchase and that sort of thing, to know what we're dealing with.
Yes, sir. I, I don't know it, but I know that we will provide that information.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And this is just organic waste that we're talking about and nothing else, right? There's no other waste from landfills or transfer sites, it's just the organic waste?
Yes, yes.
Organic household waste, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, quickly councillor Brandhorst.
Thank you. Just one last question. For the chicken manure, it's a highly sought-after form of manure and fertiliser. So will it be used as, or like a one-for-one, for a tonnage to tonnage of chicken manure to organic, and will it be just strictly traded as the business model, or?
Yeah, yes, you're right. I mean, there are very strict regulations about this, but it's just a fraction of the production process. It's essential, it's primary, but as far as I know, it's less than five percent of the actual need, and it doesn't have to be chicken. I mean, there are alternatives too. Chicken is the best, but we will comply with the regulations in Ontario, and they are strict, but we, we are aware of that, yes.
Okay, I guess, kind of answers my question, but more specifically, how, like, farmers won't want to give away this product, so I'm just more curious on how the contracting with, with farmers will happen, and do you already have the intake of chicken farms in the area that are interested in participating?
Yeah, we, we didn't formalise the process, but we get in touch with a couple of them, and we will buy it. I mean, they want to sell it, and we want to buy it.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Clear set.
Councillor Brainy.
Thank you, Engle, Engle, I listened the other night, Englesdorfer, I know how to pronounce your name. The question I have for you, and I'm trying to, I, I understand, and I think what you're trying to do is, is, it, it, it has, it's a good idea, good concept, the thing that I'm, the thing that I'm stuck with in my head is, is, is why, why don't you just do it? And I, I, I'm concerned about things that, I mean, I'm a farmer too, it just, it, just the staff time involved with these expressions that seem to keep coming and coming and coming. It's not your fault. It's, it's. It's a proceed, it's a process thing that's going on in here that sometimes it needs to find an end day. And I guess my fear is, is once we do something like this, then you, you almost have to entertain everyone else that has a concept or idea. So it's not that I'm not in favor of what you're trying to do, your concept, your vision. I think it's admirable, but I do have issues with, I don't know if I'm behind us getting involved as the county or having our staff involved. So do you have, can you, what is it we're going to be able to do to help you out?
Yes, sir. I mean, the county has a problem that needs to be solved. You have organic waste, and this has to be processed. So you need to find the best solution that works for you financially and environmentally. We claim that our approach is the best solution environmentally and financially, and this is what the staff is going to explore. We have proof, we have done that study before. But of course, the county needs to do its own research, and I think your staff has already been working on different alternatives. And if it makes sense, then of course, it will be the best decision for county to proceed with that new approach. But for us, the main, one of the main reasons is, we have been working with Kate's Rest Foundation for a while, and we want to support them. I mean, it's a business initiative, but we also like the idea of being able to help vulnerable communities. We are in engagement with other areas too, like indigenous communities, because we are not planning to build one capacity. But we always want to make it, make sure that it is also socially beneficial project idea, not just for business, but a social enterprise structure.
Just one follow up. So I appreciate your response, and if we don't support it, I would imagine you're still going to go ahead with it anyway, so.
Yes, I mean, we already started the process to transfer one capacity to Canada. Our number one priority is Prince Edward County for several reasons. But it's not the only option. I mean, we can always proceed with multiple, yeah.
Sorry, just quickly, I don't usually, it's not that I, I'm not in favor of the vision or the concept, it's just trying to get the municipality and our staff and it, you can see where I'm coming from.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
When does this, when does this road stop? You know, it's just, and it's not that I'm against your project, it's just, it's just we need to, we need to really think about these things and the precedents they set for future organizations.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counsel McNamara?
Thank you. Hi, Brian. Hi. Thank you for talking to us about this today. I'm always interested in projects like this. But I just am not sure, we do have, the first report on the agenda talks about moving forward with an expression of interest process. I'm just wondering, is that something that you would do? Participate in that process when that moves forward? Presumably, if it does move forward? Is that sort of your thinking? Or are you looking to sidestep that process to, at this time? I'm just, I just want to clarify which, or is it both?
Okay, I'm not clear about what the process is you're referring to, but what I'm speaking to is the Home and Farm Initiative, which includes modular housing and hydroponic farms for vulnerable populations, that will also include organically good fertilizer processing, which will be used by our hydroponic farms. So if there's an expression of interest on that kind of a project, we would be right up front with that by all means.
Not for the homes. The next report, the report on the agenda relates to organic processing specifically. So it would be something that I think would fit in with that expression of interest going, moving forward.
Okay. Then we would certainly consider that, yeah.
Okay, I see. Oh, Counsel Grosso?
I personally love this project, and the question I have for you is, what zone change would be needed?
That would be one of the things, right now, I think the property that we're looking at is a zoned industrial. I'm not sure exactly, it was sort of an MX, whatever that is. And so we would need to look at that in terms of whether that would allow us to use that land for this purpose. Just a quick glance, it would seem to, but that's what we want to work with the staff to clarify as well.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions, so can I please get a mover and seconder to receive this? Do you have a question?
Uh, sorry.
Okay, Counsel Harrison?
Yeah, I can't support this until there's, I think your ideas are fine and everything, but until, I can see some numbers as to potential volume produced, the price analysis, there's quite a bit missing here for a good, solid decision from an agricultural point of view, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Roberts?
Hi, Roberts.
Okay, can I get a seconder, please? Counsel St. Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a Robert St. Jean motion that the deputation by Brian Hart and Daniel Leverence, Kate's Rest Foundation regarding the Home and Farm Initiative and the proposed organics processing site be received.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, so that moves us on to comments from the audience. Today, we have one registered comment, so I'll welcome Gary Mooney, who's going to speak on the report of the Corporate and Legislative Services Department regarding the 2026 municipal election update. Welcome, Gary. And just, you're no stranger here, so just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Thank you, and good day, council members and staff and guests. I'm here regarding the planned 2026 referendum question. Are you in favor of a third-party review of council size and related ward boundary changes? Staff spent valuable time to organize and prepare for four information meetings around the county to explain the question, describe the process, and obtain feedback. These meetings were well-publicized in advance. Unfortunately, attendance at the four meetings, excluding counselors and staff, was near zero. Only seven, five, five, and four residents respectively, for a total of 20 people. Putting this into perspective, with a population of 26,000, fewer than one county resident per thousand was interested enough to attend the information meeting. The acting clerk estimated the cost of the consultant's report would likely be $75,000 to $100,000, a substantial sum that would either increase taxes or reduce other services. The results of the referendum would be binding only if the election turnout was at least 50%. Since amalgamation, turnout percentages have ranged from 40% to 47%, never as high as 50%. Even if 50% was reached, the counselor who pushed downsizing through this term of council stated that he won't be running again, so won't be available next term to follow through on this project. Then there's the issue of potentially obligating the next council to take on a project not of their own choosing, thereby incurring expenses and using up valuable time, even if the new council doesn't see this as a priority. The bylaw to authorize this referendum question is expected to come before council in January. Between now and then, I would like to respectfully suggest that council members reconsider their support for this referendum question. If you decide to proceed with this question, I suggest that it is essential that the estimated cost of the consultant's report be included in the question, so that voters can make a financially informed choice. Should this question be pursued, consider no interest from residents, 50% election turnout unlikely, report costing as much as $100K, counselor proponent not running for reelection, this council potentially forcing a project on the next council, five good reasons to rethink the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Just going to see if there's any questions. Counsel Brainy?
Mr. Mooney, it's the first time I've engaged you in three and a half years. You've been here many times, and for some reason, things don't really seem to go your way, and you keep coming back and back. We're an elected council, and you know, the thing that really, I've never really brought up, is you were one of the biggest proponents for having a review of size of council.
Right.
So I don't understand why, what is your fear? I guess the way I'm looking at it is, I'm very confident. I know what my residents and residents right around the county have told me, that they want this review. Furthermore, I think that this ballot question is going to bring a huge turnout, could be very much well over 50%, which is also very encouraging for a council or democratic process. Me deciding not to run in the 2026 election should have no bearing on any outcome. This gives council something that they can gravitate towards, something that's precise, something that is defining, to have this council go through a proper governance review and look at all the things that county residents are saying. And you cannot tell me I've had, I had overwhelming, you were at the All Canada tonight, Mr. Mooney, you heard people tell me that this was huge, so. I have nothing else to say, other than the fact, we've made a decision. I don't understand what your fear is about it. Let it happen, let's see what the result is.
Can I respond to that?
Of course, yeah.
My concern isn't so much the number of counselors, although there are, in my view, many unintended consequences of shrinking the size of council. My primary concern is retaining the communities of interest that have developed and blossomed here over more than 100 years. And the inevitable result of downsizing council means we have to re-divide the county into, let's say, four pretty arbitrary wards. And so that's my concern, it's maintaining communities of interest in Prince Edward County.
Just quickly, Counsel Brainy?
Thank you for the explanation, but you were one individual that made it very clear to me when I was running in the last election, that you would not support a candidate that did not undergo a governance review in a size of council initiative.
I'm sorry? I have no recollection of saying anything like that.
Counsel McNamara?
Thank you. Thank you for coming today, Gary. And I just wanted to start out by saying how we, while we differ on this matter and many others, I've always appreciated how disagreement can be deep but navigated and navigated respectfully. And I do appreciate all the times you've told me that I'm dead wrong, and I've said right back at you, fella, so...
Actually, I think you owe me a response.
I probably do, you know? I probably do. I will accept that. I just, I wanted to also say, I share your concern about preservation of communities of interest, and I like our, I like local representation to have a close and direct connection to neighborhoods. I think that's powerful, but I also am interested in seeing in how we reduce council size, as you know. But I did just want to also agree with Counsel Brainy, that one person not being at the table, while that can make a difference, doesn't always, there are many people, including myself, who think that looking at ways to reduce the size of council, I might be interested in a more modest reduction than some, but the council of the day gets to decide what that looks like. So I don't think just because one person's not at the table, a project shouldn't go forward. So just to clarify, I don't think it's just one guy. I think it's, I think there are many people with many different visions, and I think incoming counselors will have many different visions as well, and can respond to. If there is a report at that time, they can respond in their own way. But I always appreciate your, while we disagree, I always appreciate your engagement. Thanks.
If I could just follow up on my earlier response. I was involved in the McPherson-McBurney attempt to reduce the size of council. That went to appeal, and the OMB member, not so much appeal, that wasn't appeal, but the OMB member, basically, we were, at the time, we were focused on adjusting the rep by pop to be more realistic, or more balanced, because we had Bloomfield at the time. The OMB member in his, or her, report said that rep by pop was not the primary issue. The primary issue was communities of interest. And that got burned into my mind, and that's what's been driving me ever since.
Okay. Quick follow up? Yeah?
Thank you, yes. And that, I think, is something to be taken seriously, but at the same time, and one of the reasons I think I was hoping we'd be able to do something this term, addressing the inequities between a voter, for example, not to single you out, John, a voter in South Marysburg versus a voter in Sophia'sburg, those are still starkly different, and the weight, the weight per each vote does need to be addressed somehow. Even though I think it's currently within legal limits, it's really pushing those edges significantly, and that's another strength when we, if we're able to go forward with this.
My understanding is that in Ontario, in municipalities, there is no rep by pop rule. There's no requirement for rep by pop. It's provincial and it's federal.
I believe there is...
Yeah, I think we're straying into a back and forth discussion here, so.
We can return to the conversation that I apparently never responded to, which I fully believe, on another medium.
Counsel Grosso?
This is more of a comment. I don't usually agree with Counsel Brainy, especially when the Bills are playing the Jets. But in this case, I do agree with him, and I just wish it wouldn't cost taxpayers over $100,000 to put this question on the ballot, but at the end of the day, it is something that should happen. And let's just see where it goes. Go Bills, go.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mooney? Counsel St. Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Gary. Good to see you again. So with regards to areas of community interest, so we know that while it was lost as a standing ward in the community, Bloomfield, Bloomfield didn't go anywhere. So, you know, I've always maintained that communities of interest are not defined by electoral wards. They're defined by the people that live in them, and where they, and where those communities are, whether it's Consey-Con, whether it's Milford, whether it's South Bay, whether it's Picton, or anything. It's, I'm looking at the totality of the whole. And we have one community of interest here mainly, and that's all of Prince Edward County. So that's the way I look at it. So I guess my question is, what is your definition of a community of interest?
It's very simple. My definition is the nine wards we have now. And regarding Bloomfield, if we are prepared to go back to 1905 or 1906, Bloomfield was part of Halliwell. So what we've done is, with the latest changes, is return to the, I think, 1907, 1906 ward division.
Okay, the same could be said about North and South Marysburg and Picton-Halliwell at one point, so. I'm not, I don't, I think we're going to have to agree to disagree on our definition of what a community of interest is, but mainly for me, it has absolutely nothing to do with electoral boundaries. So, thank you.
Counsel Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just...
Just, it's good to see you. But just in terms of my reality in Sophiausburg, especially with new residents and young families and being involved in the community, whether it's a rec committee or other activities and so on, their identification with community of interest is way more complex and interesting and very much attached to the township, the historical township pre-amalgamation. And some of them don't even know where the wards are. So I would say that the time is right for what we have initiated.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you, Gary. I think I know the answer, but is there anybody else in the audience who would like to write a comment? Nope, seeing none. Can I please get a motion to receive today's comment in the audience? Counselor McNaughton and Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, McNaughton and Nyman motion to receive the comments from the audience.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that carries. So that will bring us to item six point one, report of the Operational Services Department dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-five regarding the organics processing facility feasibility study. Can I please get a mover and second to put this on the floor before we hand it over to Albert? Counselor Brandhorst and Counselor St. Jean? Okay, Counselor St. Jean then, and me a second, please. Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. St. Jean Roberts motion, the report OPS twenty-three, twenty twenty-five regarding organics processing facility feasibility study be received. The council direct staff to pursue an expression of interest for third-party options and opportunities for organics processing and management in Prince Edward County. That council direct staff to monitor for funding opportunities and return to council in the event significant funding opportunities arise and the council direct staff to offer backyard composter giveaways on a biennial basis.
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. Welcome, Albert. Do you have a, would you like to go over a bit of a rundown for council?
Absolutely. And thank you for having me, Chair, and members of council. This report is a result of a feasibility study conducted by G H D and they're looking, they were looking into the possibility of organics processing within Prince Edward County. It incorporates significant consultation with the public broadly and also in each of the areas where sites were specifically evaluated. And the report comes after direction from council to explore ways to reduce waste management costs, particularly organics. The report evaluates county-owned properties for their feasibility to be used as an organics processing facility. And the report also looks at a variety of possible technologies which go hand-in-hand with these sites. The initial intention was to explore open winrow composting as an inexpensive option for composting, but unfortunately, due to the regulatory constraints and incompatibility with some of our properties, such as proximity to neighbors and sensitive receptors, the option was not recommended. It was found that the sites reviewed, of the sites reviewed, particularly the Sophiausburg Works Garage, could be utilized as an organics processing facility with the property, proper technology that limits impacts to neighboring properties. The recommended technology was to use a covered aeritic statted pile system, and this is widely used throughout Canada. However, the capital costs don't make a lot of financial sense at this time, given the amount of material that we generate here in the county. So the report does, it does provide a preliminary design for the possibility of such facility that could be picked up and looked at in the future should quantities change, should feasibility change based on available organic material, how much we produce and just, you know, fiscal situations, fiscal atmosphere around it. So staff are recommending exploration of the third-party options via an E F I to see if a commercial market can work with us to build this capacity. We're also recommending continuing efforts on the backyard composting front. We had quite a bit of uptick in the previous composter giveaways we provided, the council directed us to provide. We did reach saturation on the last one, so that's why we're suggested to go to biennial, so we're not hitting that point. So we're better addressing the need that's out there in the, in the community. Staff have also proposed a waste diversion reserve in recent reports to council and it's funded by surplus from our agreements with C M O. As this reserve builds, the county's population will grow as well and potentially will reach that point at which it's feasible to explore something like this, where we would operate a facility on our own. That, of course, is in the event we don't find a third party that we could work with, who could do this with us. Lastly, I'll just make a quick anecdotal comment here. We did undertake a process for re-tendering the curbside waste collection contract that we have here. It's ending next year. And as part of that, preliminary findings show that we will have some savings on the organics front compared to our previous budgets.
Okay. Thank you, Albert. I'll go to Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Albert, for this textbook. Between your report and the consultant's study, this is one of those ones that you keep forever, because it's like, it's like a textbook on organic waste management. Trouble is, it leaves us with having to make expensive choices. I support the idea of going on an E O I and seeing if anything can come of that, but I do have a technical question on, currently, I think we figure our cost is about three hundred thousand dollars, as mentioned in the report. How much of that is the transportation versus the processing? Because no matter what technique is done, whether you went with the Kate's Rest idea or the seven million dollar idea, you still have to pick it up at everybody's house, right? So I need to know the, do we know what the transportation cost is versus the rest?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Hirsch. We do. It's approximately half. Yeah, so about half would be in transportation costs and collection costs, and the other would be processing. However, if the material did not have to be transported outside of the county, some of those costs could reduce potentially. However, that'd be, you know, explored in the next tender in five years.
Good. Thank you. That's great.
Counselor Brandhorst?
Hi, thank you, Albert, for this report. It was, yeah, like Counselor Hirsch said, it's an academic paper, basically on organic waste, but specifically in the county, so it's interesting to read. One of my first thoughts came from specifically the nine million dollar building. It's really expensive and with three hundred thousand dollars, our yearly payment on a nine million dollar facility, assuming one point five percent interest, would be about nine, four hundred and nineteen thousand before operating costs. It's already starting to not look great. Where do you feel like is going to be either the point that we should start looking into, and that's saying no grants, obviously, but where's the point that you're saying that we should start really looking into, either shifting it ourselves? Because I mean, today, from very brief numbers calculations, which I'm not a math whiz, it's not feasible, but when do you think that might start shifting?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Brandhorst. It's a tough question to answer, because there are a lot of things that will feed into that decision. It's population, it's generation of S S O, so our separated organics material, it's also how fast reserves grow, and again, grant funding available at what point in time. So all these factors may not progress at linear rates, so it's difficult to say. However, looking at the cost-benefit analysis, it looks like it's at least twenty to twenty-six years before we would see payback. That accounts for some growth, that accounts for increase in costs of the actual processing that we currently pay, and it's comparing those two things. So it's quite detailed. I'd be happy to walk through it with you at some point, but again, tough, tough to put an actual year on it without knowing the rates of change for each one of those factors.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to go to Counselor Maynard, so she doesn't have to keep putting her hand up.
Just looking at the, at the motion and the second clause where it says in Prince Edward County, but are we really saying like for Prince Edward County? Because we know that there may be people that are interested in actually taking our, taking our, our organics material. So just where in that second clause where it says in Prince Edward County, is the intent to, you know, like, I just think the word for Prince Edward County might be more, will leave it open to more, to more options?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Maynard. Absolutely. We can certainly, if a council wanted to put an amendment up front to make that more broad, that's fine. I think the broader we are with this sort of, at this sort of stage, the better we are. Certainly leaves us more open for more options.
Yeah, I just wondered if maybe that was the intent, but the word, I just think that by, so when the time comes, if I have a second, I'll just say for Prince Edward County, just so that we keep all of our options open.
And that might, could be a friendly amendment, but we'll get there when we, when we get there.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go to Counselor St. Jean and then Counselor McNaughton after that.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And yes, as the mover of the motion, I have no problem with changing in for, for, addition of one letter. So where was I going? Oh, thank you, Albert. It was certainly an interesting read. And, you know, strictly from a business model, obviously, it's extremely challenging on the scale. So speaking of scale, we previously, just recent, a few minutes ago, heard from what I would consider a potential. Have you had any conversations with that? Like, have they, has Brian Hart and that group of partner, potential partners reached out to you? Because this is your lane. And if they did, can you maybe help us to understand what those conversations might have been about?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor, Counselor St. Jean. Yes, we've had some preliminary discussions. We had a quick site meeting at the selected location here, the recommended locations of Fysburg. They took a look around and just looked at the general area. We provided information about what, what we have from like a material standpoint and brief discussions on that front. I think there are still lots of questions that need to be answered with respect to planning and a few other factors, but those conversations were initially just about fact-finding and presenting the information that we have. We did mention that, you know, we'd be pursuing this report and bringing it to council and possibly looking at an E O I if council approved. That was really the extent of it.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, because I see some potentials there. You know, obviously, what they were, what they're proposing is, it's much different than just a composting site, because I, you know, having attended the Sophiausburg presentation, you, me, one reporter, one couple and two individuals, you know, the presentation then was great, I understood what was going on, and I think the residents did as well, for that particular application, you know. But this is different. What we heard earlier was a little different, so I'm hoping that we will be open-minded through, through the E O I process as broad as we can, so that we can capture something like that, that while it, it's not exactly what you were looking at, it, there's a benefit there. And, you know, what I'm hearing from them is there's social benefits, there are employment benefits, there's manufacturing. That's what manufacturing is, whether it's making fertilizer or, or whatever. And so I see a lot of things, but it's not uncomplicated, so. So I just encourage, I would encourage them, it's unfortunate they left, that they continue the conversation with you, because, and hopefully, they have read that report, to help them better understand some of the limitations. And it's mainly about what we, we just don't generate enough to make it a financially viable business, not without reaching out to our neighbors in the area, which I think is what Counselor Maynard was thinking about, let's reach out a little broader, so. Sorry about the rambling commentary.
You have a response?
Yes, please. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor St. Jean. And just to clarify, our conversations, the conversations I have had with that group focused around the organics piece. So the addition of these other components were, came a bit later after we had our, had our initial discussions, so commenting on those pieces is difficult, but certainly from an organics perspective, I don't know the process, but we are looking for ways to reduce, and if they could use it, great, as long as all the checks and balances are in place and the proper questions are asked and answered.
Okay. I have Counselor McNaughton and Counselor Nyman.
Thank you. I, thank you, Albert, for the report. I was astonished at the price tags that could be associated. I found it very surprising and just wondered if there were sort of technologies that are currently used, certainly in on-farm settings, that might be more affordable and still be applicable, but there might be quite a lot of limitations that municipalities face with municipal collection, that, for example, on-farm uses or, or, well, I guess particularly farm uses would, would have to sort of, what bar they might have to meet versus a municipality. So I'm interested in technologies as they evolve and as they become available to municipalities and if there might be biodigestors that might become a good option down the road. When you go forward to do, I am supportive of the recommendation as is, when you go forward to do the E O I, I'm just wondering if there's room to, to look for side benefits in that process, because it's not necessarily written into our procurement by law, but seeing social benefit, we have, we've done expressions of interest in the past where, where best use values became part of the E O I. So when it, when the E O I is issued and written, it might be, it might be interesting to talk about side benefits, like social benefits or community benefits or benefits for agriculture specifically. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nyman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of quick questions. When Kate's Rest was standing there, they'd mentioned about having a study, and that's why they wanted to have the conversation with the county, with staff. And I think it's kind of where I think Counselor Brainy was going, and I was kind of figuring it out myself, is, you know, as staff, we really don't want to do a study for a private So I just want to make sure that the study that we're, we're doing will be what's for, how it's going to benefit us. Can you just explain what the study we're going to be looking at and how it's going to differ with what their Kate's Rest was looking for?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Nyman. What we're looking at is an E O I, so it will be a broad net cast out, requesting input from any number of parties who have the capability of managing our organics. Initially, the intention was to have this E O I focused just on managing our material. So I say that I mean, the intent of the E O I is to find a solution to our material. If there is an amendment to, you know, update that and include social benefits, that can be part of it. But at this stage, the context of this report really is focusing on the organics piece and not, not the others. Certainly welcome to do whatever we're directed to. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. We're basically just looking at how we can get, reduce or get rid of our organic waste and reduce the cost occurring right now. Is that, in a nutshell, what it is?
Yes, it is. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Nyman. We want to see what options are out there. Are there any creative ideas or any groups that could help us manage this material, help reduce our costs, and basically bring back to council and present to council what we find.
Okay. So I was just a little, I guess I just didn't understand what Kate's Rest meant by having studies and wanting to talk to staffs. I just want to make sure that we're not hauled into doing studies for somebody, you know, that's.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Nyman. This would be just an E O I request, so we would prepare a document with some terms and it would be up to the proponents to come back to us with their, their information. This wouldn't include a study of, is the zoning correct? Is the, are these other things correct? There wouldn't be staff time allotted as part of the E O I process to suss that out. It's really just, give us what you're going to do for the county, how you can manage this organics waste, and we would let council make the decision if further studies are needed or if we pursue it another, another way.
Okay. Just going to have a quick follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks, yeah, that explains it. So then, the grant money that's mentioned in the report, that is i-if we're gonna build something or we're going to have the facility ourselves. So, and I guess the sites that were identified would be for that. But if it's a third party, how does that work i-if we're still using those sites? Can you just, I, I don't want to be an explain, are we getting something for the use of our site or for our land?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Nyman. So the grant specifically, you're correct. It's related to us constructing facility. Now, I, I would look further at the terms of those grants to see if, if a third-party relationship would meet the terms of the grant. Of course, if it did, we would absolutely want to, want to pursue that if council indicated that we would, would pursue it. Beyond that, yeah, I think, I think that'd be the extent of it. We would pursue it if we could, basically, yeah.
Okay, Mayor first.
Thanks very much. I think this is, I think this question has been answered. Just, you know, I thought it was great that Brian Hart came, came forward, and it's the second time that he's, he's come forward with this idea. Just want to confirm that when the EOI process goes out, they can be advised or will be advised that they are free to put forward an expression in that regard. You know, let's see what, see what they come up with. You know, I do agree with, I think what Counselor Nyman was getting at, which is we don't want to do their work specifically for them. It's, it's really up for anybody that is going to put forward an expression of interest to do the, you know, the fall within the, the guidelines of the, the document they've got filled out. Separately, you mentioned that the backyard composting program was oversubscribed. That was a spring one, the, the one that I participated in. And if so, how oversubscribed was it?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, to the mayor. I believe we were able to give away about half of what we procured. And so the remainder was presented again in the spring to, to, to get rid of it again. So the initial purchase was made two years ago. And then this year, we dispersed the rest of the materials. So that's why we're looking at about a two-year cycle. So every two years, we purchased between 200 and 400 composters.
Right.
And then try and give them away.
Separately, if I could follow up, how much promotion do we do, not just about the availability, but about the usefulness to the average household? I mean, I've seen the ads that say, come and get a composter on Lake Street or wherever. Do we do anything more than that? I don't recall seeing anything.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, to the mayor. Yes, we do have some information available on our website as well. There are some promotional videos and some instructions on, on how to do it and what the benefits are. Certainly, we could look at exploring that further. We do often partner with the local radio station to talk about these events. So as part of those conversations, we would be discussing this as well.
Yeah, it's something the Environmental Advisory Committee should probably be up to speed about too, if not already. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Harrison and then Counselor Roberts.
Yes, what is the makeup of, of most of what you pick up for composting? What, what's comprised mostly of?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, to Counselor Harrison. We don't have an actual waste study to tell us the exact makeup. We know it's, it's source-separated organics, so food waste. The composition of, the exact composition of that isn't known at this time. But, yeah, but there's that. But then there's also the component of the leaf and yard waste that we collect at our waste sites. So you've got about 780 tons of source-separated organic material and an estimated, let's say, 1,000 of the leaf and yard waste material. So that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about managing both those streams.
Well, this may be rather simplistic. But why do we not just let a contract out or whatever? Because it looks so simple. Chop it, spread it, and disc it under.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. With respect to the, you know, leaf and yard waste, that's exactly what we're doing at this time. With the source separated, I don't believe you can spread it. The regulations would prevent you from, from doing what you were saying there, from my knowledge.
Well, I have to disagree with that, because if it was chopped, the same as you would silage it or anything else like that. There's all kinds of equipment out there to do that and just spread it like with a manure spreader, not a liquid manure spreader, but a regular manure spreader. And disc it under, and you're achieving everything that you're trying to achieve, because if it's organic, it's going back in the farm soil base, and you'd cut costs unbelievably. But that's, if there's a reason why that sort of thing can't be done, well then, that's what I'm asking, that's what my question is.
Sure. And then through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Harrison. I, I believe, I, I can, I'll double check this. It's hard to keep all the regulations straight in, in one's mind. There's so many of them. However, I do believe there's some restrictions on source-separated organics, so food waste being utilized that way. I will do my homework again and confirm that. And of course, if there's an opportunity, we'll, we'll be coming back to council with that opportunity. But I don't believe that's a possibility in the current regulatory framework.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Albert, just to share for what it's worth, well, actually with the CIO as well, as you go forward with the expression of interest. I don't see anything but upsides to include social benefits in the evaluation criteria. In fact, the federal government in May of this year put out a paper encouraging social benefits being, be included in procurement. And that, I think their language was something along the lines of social benefits, which should be part of the procurement process above and beyond the actual goods and services being tendered for. And I think they go on to say something to the effect that they see that, the feds see that as, especially at this particular time that we're in, as creating best value. So on things like the environment, on housing, on local jobs and employment when we're under some peculiar economic stress. And so incorporating those social benefits in the procurement process, I think should be part of the evaluation. And in fact, municipalities already do it when they deal with developers. I mean, I don't see what's, I don't see why we would have any kind of allergy to that. So I'm all in favor of it.
Counselor Brandhorst.
Yes, sorry. And now Counselor Harrison got me squirreling. So just, if you can't, does the regulation say specifically taking the organic matter, spreading it on a field, isn't allowed? Or what about if it was broken down in a liquid manure pit? Is that a regulation? So like if the organic waste was then broken down in a, whatever ratio, I'm finding one-to-one works? Does it then count as a different, as like then broken down matter? So then it's in a different category? Just curious.
Through, through the chair, to Counselor Brandhorst. I believe, I can't speak 100% on this and being 100% certain that that particular application isn't allowed. But generally speaking, I believe source-separated organics needs to be managed under some sort of prescribed instrument, whether it's an ECA, whether it's, you know, probably typically an ECA would be the one that would be applicable. Again, it's one of those things, I will double check. I, I can't quote chapter and verse, but I, I don't, I don't believe that. I believe it's the distinction between source-separated organics and organics. That's the kicker here. So source-separated organics, you have other factors to consider. Whereas organics, let's say, non-agricultural source material or leaf and yard waste, you don't have the same considerations.
Okay, any further questions before we call the vote on this one? Counselor Brainy? Yeah, I see, I, yeah, Counselor Maynard, I'll come to you after Counselor Brainy.
Thanks, Chair Engelsdorfer. As most of you around the table know, it would probably consider me a practical environmentalist then. It's not that I'm against the initiative and, and the project. As Counselor Roberts mentioned, you have social benefits and, and the feds, well, I would say I've seen a lot of examples where the feds and social benefits and spending money don't equate. I think we've got an issue here that we don't, we're getting into something I don't think we should really be into or supporting. It's going to cost, it's gonna cost, at the end of the day, it's gonna cost us money. It could cost us a great deal of money. And it's what I said before, it's the precedent that gets set. How do we set an example or a precedent to say, well, you, you did it for him, why not me? And it's just, we're, we're just running it, we're, we're creating something that we might not be able to get out of. But I, I, I just think we need to be very practical and think about this, and, and I, I'm, I'm gonna be voting against it just due to that.
Okay, Counselor Maynard?
Yeah, just for clarification, when you talk about the organics material and, and incorporating it into soil, but is that not what most of us are doing with our home composting anyway? So is it allowed in a, in a small scale? Because that's like, you know, where else is it going other than in the garden?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Maynard. Scale, scale is definitely, it plays a role here, for sure. And again, it's one of those things, I will, I will go back and I will double check the regulations and confirm. But commercial, or I should say, large-scale management of our source-separated organics, I believe that's gonna require an ECA.
So all of those with, of, of us with home composters that are, you know, every now and then incorporating it into, I'd just be interested to.
We're also, one thing to consider too is, when you look at a scale that we're talking about here, we're talking about sometimes different materials. You know, the, this scale that we're talking about has to be able to manage things like bones and, and meat and, you know, materials that can introduce more vectors compared to a backyard composter, which we would never recommend putting meat or bones in.
And just one, one quick extra question while we're on this topic. What do we, what are the commercial establishments? Because, I mean, you know, like restaurants and stuff, they're high producers of, of orga-, of organic waste, but they're, they're not part of the program, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Maynard. So they are part of the study that we've looked at here, and they are part of the economics of the study. Currently, I couldn't speak to what exactly they all do. I would have to check with each one and confirm. But I believe organics are typically managed through third-party agreements, if, if at all.
Yeah, I would say typically in the restaurant business, it's probably not at all, but, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're very interested in food scraps today. I'll go Counselor, Counselor Harrison and then Counselor Hirsch.
Okay, just one question when you're exploring that, to ask if there could be a perimeter on what Counselor Brandhorst or I are suggesting, which is a commercial application on farmland, basically. There could be a, a perimeter that they may have set there on so many pounds or gallons or whatever, that you could put on an acre, that might allow that if you were under that, under that threshold.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, to Counselor Harrison. Are you referring to putting source-separated organics raw at, at a certain rate? Or are you talking about material that would be generated, the compost generated from a process?
Raw, chopped.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just hope we're all clear on, on what this motion is about. This motion has nothing to do with the Kate's Rest proposal, which was presented to us. There was no motion made in respect of that. This is our organic waste program, with the bonus of leaves and twigs and stuff, which I handle myself, so no problem. But that's all this is about. And as, as Albert has tried to say, I think, we're just looking for who else has some ideas about how we can handle this waste. It's costing us $300,000 a year now. Chance, maybe gonna go down in the renewal of the contract, we don't know. But what else could be done, including farm applications or, or we can rent the Brandhorst manure pit, you know, whatever. But that's, that's what this is. This is not, this is not looking at, at these other proposals. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Counselor St. Jean.
Yes, I just want to be sure that the, the language in the motion will be altered. Four for Ian.
Okay, given that, oh, Counselor Roberts?
I'd like to.
Okay.
Counselor Roberts?
In favor?
Counselor Maynard?
In favor.
It was changing one word, in for four, so it's not, doesn't have to be specifically in Prince Edward County. It's to benefit all of Prince Edward County, okay?
Counselor Grasso?
In favor.
Counselor Nyman?
In favor.
Counselor St. Jean?
In favor.
Counselor Harrison?
In favor.
Counselor Brandhorst?
In favor.
Counselor Hirsch?
In favor.
Counselor McNaughton?
In favor.
Counselor Brainy?
Opposed.
Mayor Ferguson?
In favor.
And Counselor Engelsdorfer?
In favor.
Carries.
Okay, thank you. That will move us to 6.2, reported the Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated December 11th regarding Visit the County Financial Accountability and Relationship Agreement. Can I please get a mover and seconder to put this on the floor? Mover and seconder? Anybody? Counselor Roberts and Mayor Ferguson.
Okay, thank you. This is a Roberts-Ferguson motion that reports CSP 29 2025 regarding the Visit the County Financial Accountability and Relationship Agreement be received, that council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a five-year financial accountability and relationship agreement with Visit the County, excuse me, in a form satisfactory to the municipal lawyer, incorporating the material terms and conditions set out in the draft agreement attached to the agenda. And three, that a bylaw to authorize the execution of a financial accountability and relationship agreement between the corporation of the county of Prince Edward and Visit the County be approved at the next feasible council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Roberts. Welcome, Julianne, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. And through the chair to the committee, this report recommends a new financial accountability and relationship agreement with Visit the County. The original agreement that we've been operating under was developed before Visit the County began operations. And over the last three years, we've learned lots about what that relationship is and, and how they operate. And so we have a new agreement that we're presenting for your approval. We've worked very closely with Visit the County over the last year with their, members of their board and staff. They seem satisfied with the document that we're presenting to you today. I think the, the big, the big changes, the big additions, the, the way that this agreement has evolved, I've laid out in the report, but it, it focuses on some definitions that add some clarity to what each party does in the relationship. There are some new financial accountability provisions about how Visit the County as an eligible tourism entity administers the municipal accommodations tax and how we administer that and what that relationship, how that money flows around goes. There's a section around governance and the municipal services corporation relationship, which for the most part was absent in the previous agreement. And this really spells out what the relationship between the municipality and Visit the County is because of this special municipal services corporation relationship. And then the last section is about shared responsibility for strategic destination development. And this is all new content around how we collaborate between the municipality and Visit the County to make sure that we're working together for a, a prosperous and sustainable tourism industry here that also contributes to a livable community for residents. So happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
Okay, thank you. Questions from committee members? Counselor Harrison?
Yes, I'm just wondering why this has to be for such a long term.
Through the chair to Counselor Harrison, the term- Through the chair to Counselor Harrison, the term of this agreement mirrors the term that we have with State PEC. So we're proposing the five-year term, and there is a provision to review the agreement on an annual basis to make sure that it still works legislatively and practically. But should council wish to have a shorter term, that can be amended.
I'm just thinking about obligations on the next council, that's all. And I'm willing to hear other people's thoughts on that.
Okay, I'll go Counselor Grasso and then Counselor Maynard.
Thank you. In what situation would we be no longer obligated to give State PEC any money? And the second part is, have we ever seen a financial statement from State PEC?
Through the chair to Counselor Grasso, that is, that provision is in there on the rare, or the highly unlikely situation that over the next five years, State PEC would no longer exist, or that there would be some material breach of our agreement with them that would put either one of us in default, where we would no longer have those obligations to each other. It's just there for clarity about, in the event that that would happen, what would happen with the rest of the MAT funds. And to answer your second question, staff have received a report from State PEC regarding how they have spent their MAT and how they're meeting the obligations of their financial accountability agreement. And that meets the, the language that's in their agreement that they would forward that to, to staff.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Maynard?
Yes, thank you. Just under the definitions where it talks about shared responsibility, the second paragraph, the municipality is responsible for host community management, involves coordinating services, infrastructure, amenities, washroom, so have we, have we defined, I guess we kind of do it through, through budget, but I mean, that's, that's a pretty ambitious list of, of things that we are, like, I mean, we'll never have enough washrooms, or garbage cans, or parks, or transportation, you know, I, I just, how do we with Visit the County determine what is, what is a reasonable expectation for host community management?
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard, that is, that's done by the municipality and the, the staff and the leadership of the various departments that be responsible for, for all of these things. It would be done through the budget process, bringing forward the service levels and the budgets and the resources required for the season. And through the, the collaborative planning process that's described in the relationship agreement, that's where Visit the County and the municipality could sit down and go, are, do we have enough? Are, does this, do these service levels meet the needs of the community in the summer? And that's where they can provide intelligence to us from operators or from visitors, where we can learn things about what the summer experience is and maybe adjust our service levels based on that. But it's always still within the municipality's discretion to set those service levels. It's more about collaborating, communicating to make sure that we're on the right track and providing enough or adequate service.
Yeah, well, I guess that's my concern, that it'll, it'll never be enough, but, you know, we have budget constraints, so, you know, it should, based on available budget, right? Because it's, it's a pretty, I find that, that clause or that, that bullet point a little open-ended to what our responsibilities, what our responsibilities are for, for providing amenities and infrastructure. Just comment.
Through, through the chair to Counselor Maynard, if I can follow up on that, I think that what this agreement and what this bullet point is meant to do is to clarify whose responsibility it is. So it is not Visit the County's responsibility to provide washrooms and parks and garbage. That's clearly the municipality's, whereas it's not the municipality's responsibility to promote the county as a tourism destination that is there. So it's about who is ultimately responsible for setting those service levels, and we are, and, and the municipality does that within the resources that, that we have available, to do the best that we can to meet the needs of the community.
Okay, I have Counselor McNaughton and then Counselor St. Jean.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for the report. Just wanted to touch on the audit costs, which are taken out of the gross pool before it gets, or as, as proposed. Why do they come out of the gross and not out of Visit the County's portion?
Through the chair to Counselor McNaughton, this was one of the things that came up in negotiation with Visit the County. The costs of the audit through the KPMG contract that the municipality has are significantly more expensive than what Visit the County would be able to procure on their own. And the municipality committed them to that cost prior to them beginning operations. And so it's, this was one of the things that they asked for and that staff recommended that we could accommodate, which is to consider it one of the costs of administering the MAT program for the remainder of the KPMG contract, and essentially, effectively split that cost with them to reduce that financial burden, which is more than they would be able to do on their own. So it was, it was part of the negotiation, something staff is recommending, and should council wish to do something otherwise, a motion would be required.
Okay, thank you. So now that, that is in line with also, I think, the cost that external boards and the housing corporation also see that it's very expensive, the price tag is very high for those comparably very small, very small budgets, that are relatively uncomplicated and pretty much you can view on a, on a single balance sheet. I'm just wondering if the, if our, if our audit services went out to tender in the next year or two, how that could be reflected going forward? For example, if, if Visit the County did see halving of their audit, audit costs, if there would be an oper, if, how we would be able to potentially revisit it and drop the municipal portion, what, or the gross portion down the road, so that they would then incorporate the amount fully into their budget?
Through the chair to the counselor, that is, that is the intent, and that's what's written into the agreement, that this would only be for the portion, for the remaining two years of the KPMG contract. And then once we're released from the obligation to have them in that contract with KPMG, they would procure their own audit services that meet their needs and our needs in terms of what a municipal audit would require, but they would 100% pay those costs on their own after the last two years of this KPMG. It wouldn't be split after that.
So, but in the, in the meantime, even if we did do that, even if the municipality did do that, we'd be stuck with it? So, because we can do that potentially any year. Oh, no, we can't, never mind. We can't, we're stuck. That's right. Oh, gosh, thanks. Sorry, I forgot about that. Cheers.
Okay, Counselor St. Jean, followed by Counselor Brainy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Julianne. Generally, I'm in support of what you're recommending. And I think partially to answer, maybe answer Counselor Harrison's, there's a 30-day-out clause built into this. Am I misreading it? For various reasons, not, no, for Board of, you know, Insolvency Receivership, 30-day, that's 9.2, and then, but there, there's various out clauses that, so a five-year term just gives stability over the long-term with, with an annual review, but also out clauses. So there's protections both ways. So that's why I'm not overly concerned about that. But I do, that's not what I want to ask you a question about. Counselor Grasso raised, raised a point, and you, you answered with the response that we've finally received a State PEC report. When will council get to see that? I've been asking for that for a couple of years, wondering, when are we going to? Because they have an obligation to the community and to, to council as part of that, receiving the DMMO funds, the MAT funds, to follow the same rules basically as VTC, how money is dispersed, you know, and just, and we have a responsibility to ensure that any agreements we have with, with organizations like that, that there's financial accountability. When will we see the report?
Through the chair to Counselor St. Jean, staff can bring a report to you at our earliest convenience with the, with the financial information that State PEC has provided. We're satisfied that it meets the, the terms of their financial accountability agreement, but we can certainly bring that forward so that you can have a look at it and open, and the, and the community can see it as well.
Transparency with any of these. Ideally, I would like to see them come and do a presentation as Visit the County does annually. Again, we need to, they need to be on par. I know the dollars are different, but when it comes to, you know, we're collecting it for them to disperse, I want to know for sure, and I want to be able to ask those questions. How did you spend it? What are your thoughts in the future? We haven't had that opportunity yet, so, and it's been three years now?
Through the chair to the counselor, when we bring that report back, we will invite State PEC to come and make a presentation on that, that day as well.
Highly recommend that they be a deputation. Thank you.
Counselor Brainy and then Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. I'm completely in line with what Counselor St. Jean and what Counselor Grasso mentioned. However, I'm also believe that I can support a term. I, I don't see doing that, but I, I think what Counselor Harrison's saying has a great deal of merit. Five years could change, it, it doesn't allow a new council that might, might have some vision questions insight to. I, I don't want to, a five-year term to me seems a bit, well, seems very long. I don't want to stranglehold any future colleagues around this table from being involved and asking, asking questions that, that may lead to outcomes. And I think, I think it's also, we talked about Counselor Prinsen, transparency. I don't see it as a bad thing to have a shorter term to allow that transparency and have that dialogue constantly with, with the stakeholders that are involved with this, to, to ensure that it goes in the direction that, that everybody around this table wants to see it go. And so I, I do think there's some, some merit with what Counselor Harrison said, that I'm, I'm certainly a bit reluctant to, to support a five-year. I would certainly be in favor of a shorter-term period.
Okay, Counselor Roberts?
Chris, I think you meant Counselor St. Jean.
Actually, Counselor Harrison, that should be.
I think you said Counselor Prinsen. It doesn't matter. I sometimes get... I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick... I need to stick name tags on my kids, so don't worry about it. Oh, you number yours, that's pretty good. Just to reinforce the point that Counselor St. Jean made, and I think Counselor Grasso initiated, I really want to see the books. I want the public to see the books. I want council to see the books, and I want them at the podium making a presentation. And, and something a bit more insistent than invitation. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Counselor Grasso and then Counselor McNaughton?
Just to add, I think the State PEC members would like to see the books as well.
Counselor McNaughton?
Just if Counselor Brainy was bringing forward a motion for a shorter term, I would be supportive.
Okay, I'll hand it over to Counselor.
In fairness to Counselor Harrison, since he brought it up first, I'll allow him, if he wants to do that, I, you can gladly second it. I don't know if you're going that way, Counselor Harrison, so.
To my way of thinking, a two-year term would be a vote, right? That gives a new council a year into it, and if they want to make some changes that they can see through their, in their term, I think a two-year, changing that to a two-year turnover, or whatever you want to call it.
And you have a second and Counselor McNaughton? Okay, so, so that's on the floor. Any discussion on this motion? No? Counsel, or Mayor Ferguson?
You know, I do concur with the, the reducing the term. I just wonder if two years might be too brief, given the, what a new council has to go through with the orientation and getting used to, all kinds of information. I'd suggest perhaps three might be more appropriate midway through the next term, if the mover and second have any, any, you know, ability to, or desire to adjust that to three years.
Three is fine, I debated that.
Okay, so it's, it's on the floor for a three-year term? Any further questions before I call the vote? Counselor Brainy?
Just quickly, I, I, I see that as a, as maybe a, a good way forward, since the last term, I, from what I read in the report, was also three years, so making it another three, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so it's on the floor, I'm going to call the vote, all those in favor? That carries, thank you. And then the main motion as amended? I'll call the vote on that one, all those in favor? And that carries as well. Thanks, Julianne. Okay, and that brings us to item 6.3, Report of the Corporate and Legislative Services Department dated December 11th, 2025 regarding 2026 Municipal Election Update, Use of Corporate Resources Policy and Restricted Acts of Council Bylaw. Can I please get a mover and second to put this one on the floor? Counselor McNaughton and Counselor Harrison?
Just gonna get the motion back up in front of me. The McNaughton-Harrison motion that reports CLS 39-2025 regarding 2026 Municipal Election Update, Use of Corporate Resources Policy and Restricted Acts of Council Bylaw be received, that council approve a delegated authority by law to temporarily provide the corporation of the county of Prince Edward with the ability to conduct certain business in the event of council being restricted in its authority pursuant to Section 275 of the Municipal Act for enactment, the January 13th, 2026 council meeting, and that council approve the revised use of corporate resources in an election policy as listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor McNaughton. I'll hand it over to Catalina.
Thank you, Counselor Engelsdorfer, and through you. This report provides council with an update on the administration and planning so far of the 2026 municipal election, and seeking your approval for the enhanced use of corporate resources in an election policy, as well as the restricted acts of council bylaw. I am here to take any questions.
Okay, I hand it over to members of committee. Are there any questions? Counselor Brainy?
Just to say that I, I support this, and, and as our, our last election, just to our clerk, I always, we're always going on an upward trend with, I appreciate your passion with these things and your accountability, and I do think that we're even looking at a better result with the upcoming election due to all your hard work on this, so, so thank you. I have complete confidence in it, and really appreciate what you do with this.
Thank you, Counselor Brainy. I appreciate the, the confidence, but I do want to stress that this is a team project. It would not be possible without the mighty clerk's office, as well as the support of the wider corporation. Staff from all departments help out throughout the election process, and they are, they are working at the different poles. So I do, while it's led by me and my office, it is a corporate project.
Okay, thank you. I have a list here, so I have Counselor Nyman, Hirsch, and then McNaughton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Catalina. I just have, if this is the wrong time to ask this, you can let me know. But I just want to make sure, because last time when I, we were out campaigning, we heard about the voters' list, and people not being on it, and people on it, and whatever. And I'm sure you had, or the clerk's office had quite a few inquiries. So I'm just wondering, how are we going to mitigate those problems again? Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Nyman, this is the perfect time to ask that question. This is the first election where Elections Ontario has taken this responsibility for managing the voters' list. So what's great about that is that the Elections Ontario and the federal government share the information. So we recently had a federal election, so the voters' list should be accurate from that election that we recently had. As well, we will be starting in the new year in February to start campaigning to encourage people to check the voters' list, make sure they're on their list. It's through the Ontario website, and it's very easy to do so, it should only take a few minutes. So we'll start campaigning and encouraging people to do that. We'll also ensure that that is available here at Shire Hall, and then all of our local libraries, we partner with them. So we'll encourage people to utilize the Elections Ontario website. But the beauty of that is, starting in the summertime, that information is then provided to the municipality. So then we'll be responsible for managing the accuracy of the list. And what we do is, we take all of our vital statistics information that we have, so any bureau permits, people that have... So any bureau permits, people that have, um, perhaps, you know, passed away. It's been a couple of years since the last election. So we make sure that we scan and do a big data cleansing of the list to ensure that it's as accurate as possible. But of course, there's still going to be anomalies and people that moved to the county October first and the elections October twenty sixth. So we will try to make the voters list as accurate as possible, but we really are going to rely on the community to also do that check and be the responsible citizens and ensure they're on the list.
Yep.
Just, just the Ontario website. What, what website is it? Or how will people know to go to that website?
I think the website is hyperlink to the report, if I'm not mistaken. But it's just, they can just use any search engine and say, Ontario, make sure I'm on the voters list. So if they could Google that, then the website will come up, and then they just put in their information, so their name, their birth date, and they should be able to check the voters list.
Okay, councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you Catalina. I can't believe we're at this stage again already. It seems so soon. Related question to councillor Nyman's question. I think I'm glad that M P A C is no longer doing the voters list because we've had so many troubles with him in the past. But, and you will recall, we had this conversation some three years ago, I guess, about the, never mind people not being on the list, but those being on the list, we have the wrong address. And I don't know what, to what extent you're going to be happy that we're in better shape, just for the benefit of council. I sent a mailing by Canada Post to eight hundred and sixty some households in my ward, and thirty five of those came back undeliverable. I found that an astonishing number of undeliverables. And Catalina probably confirmed that the county got back a lot more than that in terms of the voters cards. So where are we at in terms of those anomalies being corrected as well? And I think our tax bills somehow go to those same addresses too. And that's really scary if tax bills aren't getting to the people who need to pay them.
So through the chair, thank you councillor Hirsch for that question. So we have a procedure by way of what we do to cleanse the voters list. So we look at all the address anomalies. For example, some addresses will say, like County Road fifteen, some will say C R. So there's just lots of anomalies with the way that the different county road are spelled. So it's a really big challenge, and we will focus on ensuring that it aligns with our previous list when we get the voter notification cards once they're mailed and we have returned them. So in the clerk's procedures, we prepare clerk procedures under the Municipal Elections Act, and they have to be ready in June and then publicly posted. In our elections procedure, what I'm going to enhance from 2022 process is when we get those voter notification cards returned, and they're returned to us because they're not deliverable, what I'm going to start doing is I'm going to start taking that, and we're going to actually utilize that information and double check, okay, why is it undeliverable? Instead of not opening these, we're going to actually do an investigation of like, what? Was it the, the way the address was spelled? Is this person still living here? So we will do a further investigation to ensure that, like, that voter notification card gets to that person if they are indeed still a voter, or maybe they're not a voter, they no longer live here, so that we can confidently remove them from the voters list. And this will also impact the voter turnout because voter turnout is based on how many voters we sent voter notification cards to. So if that's, that's never going to be a hundred percent accurate. So if we do that cleansing and that extra check to really ensure that the list is as accurate as possible, then the voter turnout should be higher because it will be more responsive to the actual amount of residents that are eligible voters in this community.
Yep, go ahead councillor Hirsch.
Just a quick follow up. Thank you, Mr Chair. And, and so will you also compare notes with the finance department to see if we're all dealing with the same addresses? That would just make sense to me.
That's an excellent suggestion. We didn't before because we were all getting the information from M P A C, but because now we have information coming from a different source, it's an excellent suggestion to check with the finance department. Thanks.
Okay, councillor McNaughton.
Thank you. A number of things are of interest here, and I really appreciate the report. And I do want to go back to that last election and how successful the turnout was. And the clerk's team was actually, was, was so ahead of the game and so ahead of other municipalities that I'm really excited to see what you come up with this time. Also, Catalina and I attended the Healthy Democracies Project, A M O's Healthy Democracies Project conference. I, it wasn't a conference, it was a forum last, last fall in which we heard wonderful ideas from many different sources and many different municipalities. And I wanted to put my hand up many times and say, our municipalities are already doing that. Because our clerk's department was so ahead of the game and so prepared. It was really a moment of pride for me in our municipality and our staff. So it's so exciting. It's going to be exciting to see what you guys do this time. Now, you've got written, one of the questions I have relates to, you've got an event, an education event. Your seat at the horseshoe listed for March thirty first. And you did something similar last time. Are you planning other events or is it specifically going to be that one? Are you hope, are you sort of considering more? Or, um, or you'll see as time goes by? Just wondering what your strategy is there.
Through the chair to councillor McNaughton, thank you for the question. We are definitely thinking of doing additional workshops. We really want to capitalize on the wonderful community groups in this municipality. So instead of asking everybody to come to us, we're really going to try the approach of going to where people are already meeting and congregating. So really going to reach out to those community groups and say that we're available to talk about the election, encourage people to run for office. So while the, your seat at the horseshoe will be sort of like the main workshop before the nomination period opens, we will be going out to the different community groups and the different events happening here to encourage people to run for office and to get on the voters list, et cetera.
Thanks, I think that's a good strategy. And a little, just to follow up regarding the language further down, which I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to clarify with you prior to the meeting. But just on page four of nine, you've got, just in the wording on, in section six, I just wanted to clarify, under six point one D, you refer to candidates and registered third parties not using county facility, facility space that is leased in accordance, et cetera, et cetera. Does that refer to locations that the county itself leases? For, for example, the Edward Building? Or does that, is that what that means?
Through the chair, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's county property that we may not own, but we are leasing.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Councillor Maynard?
Thank you. And thanks for the excellent report. I just have a question on the question on the ballot page one fifty one on the, on the process. So it lists there first that we were going, we'll have these public input, input meetings. And then the following paragraph says, a robust communication plan will be implemented following the outcome of this process within the timeline outlined in image one. So because we now know, right, that we had a, you know, an astonishing low attendance, and I would say that the majority of the people that did attend were opposed, how does that, like, does that have any impact? Or how does that affect the communications on the, on the question on the ballot?
Through the chair to councillor Maynard. So there will be a report coming forward for council direction on the final wording of the question to continue on the question on the ballot process. It's my understanding in speaking with director Veil that that is coming forward in January. And at that time, it will be a specific report on what we heard and learned through the public consultations and come forward with a finalized question on the ballot. I will remind council that you did make a decision to have a question on the ballot.
Right.
So that needs to be fulfilled. And then you leave it up to the citizens to actually vote on yes, no through the election process.
Right, and then that, that bylaw then will be passed like March, March first. Okay, I'm just looking to make sure that everybody was, was clear on the, on the process. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Councillor McNaughton?
Thank you, yes. So just, um, I just wanted to clarify, are there further reports coming back to us between now and the elections opening up? Where we'll be hearing any specifics about the voting systems, et cetera? That, and additionally, did, did we, how many retirement homes with under fifty beds did we include last election?
Through the chair to councillor McNaughton, the, there are two additional reports coming forward for a council decision pertaining to the election. One is the Wonderful Elections Sign bylaw, which is expected to come forward in February as well as the Compliance Audit Committee report, where you will be choosing people to serve on the Compliance Audit Committee, which reviews financial statements from candidates. Through those reports, of course, I'll always provide general updates on where we're at with planning. I will say that since the publishing of this agenda, we have secured a vendor to provide us with the systems to run our internet and paper ballot entabulation process. So that's great, and it came in a little bit under budget, so good news. So the election budget will reflect that, the new number for that service. But we do also have to be careful about balance because council, while you have certain decisions that you are able to make through the Municipal Elections Act on the election, there are certain areas where there is no decision making by this council. It's a decision of the returning officer, the clerk. That is the special voting locations and the voting locations. So while I heard you last time where we wanted to have more specialized voting locations, we will, the last election, we did not have any special voting locations for any retirement homes that were under fifty beds. And that was due to the staffing capability. So we are, we heard you from last year, and we will be going to more specialized voting locations. On part of this report, there's just nine right now. But pending approval of the budget, there are some funds included to have more staff so that we can hit up additional voting locations, particularly on advance voting day.
Thanks.
Councillor Harrison?
It's probably in here, and I probably missed it, but the, what's the prescribed timeframe when those cards are out ahead of the election? Is there one, is there a provincial rule or something?
So through the chair to councillor Harrison, there is no prescribed timeframe, but in order for all of them to get to the voters, we typically mail them in early August.
Okay, that's great, because that's one of the biggest things in a ward like mine. People will say to the other person, oh, I got my voter card. Did you get yours? And it gives them time to go and do whatever's necessary in your office to get, to get a card. So that's very important. So make, try to make sure that's lengthy, fairly lengthy. And the mail isn't always too quick either.
Okay. Any further questions? No, seen none, and I'll call the vote on this. All those in favor? And that carries. Thanks Catalina. So that will move us to item seven, closed session. Can I please get a mover and secondary to move us into closed session, please? Councillor Branderhorst and councillor Nyman?
This is a Branderhorst.
Nyman.
Nyman motion that committee move into closed session to consider, one, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee in labor relations or employee negotiation, staffing matters pursuant to section two thirty nine, two B and D of the Municipal Act.
Yeah, all those in favor? And that carries, and we'll take a ten minute recess while we're getting ready for close.
So through the chair to Counselor Harrison, there is no prescribed timeframe. But in order for all of them to get to the voters, we typically mail them in early August.
Okay, that's great, because that's one of the biggest things in a word like mine. People will say to the other person, oh, I got my voter card. Did you get yours? And it gives them time to go and do whatever's necessary in your office to get a card. So that's very important. So try to make sure that's lengthy, fairly lengthy. And the mail isn't always too quick either.
Okay. Any further questions? No, seen none. Now I'll call the vote on this. All those in favor? And that carries. Thanks, Catalina. So that will move us to item seven, closed session. Can I please get a mover and second to move us into closed session, please? Counselor Branderhorst and Counselor Nyman?
This is a Branderhorst.
Nyman.
Nyman motion that committee move into closed session to consider, one, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee in labor relations or employee negotiation, staffing matters pursuant to section 239, 2B, and D of the Minus Pla.
All those in favor? And that carries. And we'll take a 10-minute recess while we're getting ready for close.
Okay, welcome back. We just completed a closed session. We have no motions coming out of it. So I just need a motion to adjourn. Counselor St. Jean, second or please? Counselor Nyman?
St. Jean Nyman motioned that the committee will now adjourn at 4:04 PM.
All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you.